I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the School District of Waukesha, a public hearing to discuss some waivers this evening, DPI waivers, on December 9th, 2020. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Hi.
Cory Mantillo.
We're here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Diane Voight.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Yes.
Joseph Komo.
Here. We are all here. And Sue, have we been properly posted?
Yes, we have.
Thank you very much. The purpose of the meeting this evening is to receive input from the community regarding the request for waiver of educator effectiveness and a request of waiver for instructional minutes. At this time, the board will receive comments from those wishing to speak to waiver issues this evening. A three-minute time limit will be allotted to all speakers commenting on the waivers. Amanda will give you a signal after two and a half minutes, and if you could wrap up your comments in the next 30 seconds, we'd appreciate it. We expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cellphone. We do have one person signed up, and that's Kelly Piatek. We're just waiting a little bit. There's a little bit of a time delay between where we are and where the audience is sitting, Welcome, Kelly.
Hi there. Good evening. I just want to start by first... Wait, do you need my name and address still? What's the...
We have it here.
...process for tonight? Okay.
Yeah.
I want to thank Dr. Seibert and Mrs. Thede for meeting with me earlier this week to discuss the details and the need for these waivers. Frankly, I just don't accept that any of this is anything other than making excuses for poor decisions. Does anyone remember that time back in April when we kind of told students that their grades wouldn't change if they didn't try, and then they stopped trying? Well, that's kind of this all over again, just with adults. Did we learn anything? I'm just really disturbed by the attempt to justify, to rush, and to minimize this request for waivers. The waivers granted in the spring were the result of mandated shutdown, not board-voted hybrid models. Other districts in our county chose to go in person. You need to take responsibility for the decisions you made. If it doesn't work, we have an opportunity to fix it, but not to make excuses. The state statutes represent the minimum expectations, and applying for these waivers, you're acknowledging that the decisions you've made as a board who took an oath to provide for the education of youth in our communities will not allow you to meet the minimum requirements of the state. Abraham Lincoln said, "You cannot escape the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today." These consequences of these decisions are not short-term. Waivers of staff evaluation are being justified due to teacher stress of being evaluated, while others in our community would welcome the stress of an evaluation, or a job for that matter. Our teachers have important jobs, but they don't want to do them. The proposal would allow teachers to choose to opt out of the evaluation process this year, meaning they won't get graded, but I've confirmed with Dr. Seibert that they would still be eligible for pay increases due to length of service. Our best teachers and staffers, those that are already picking up the slack for the underperformers are the ones that are going to suffer. They deserve to be recognized for their great work, but they'll have to choose now whether to opt out and get no credit, or to opt in without the full support or engagement of their administrators or their colleagues. This is unfair to the best of our teachers, and there are so many that are working so hard. There's no urgency to submit these waivers now. They can be submitted after the school year is over, so why now? Having waivers granted in the middle of the school year puts the burden of teacher performance on us, parents, and there will be no standards for quality or quantity of education to which our teachers will be held. For parents with children at North and South, like me, where few expectations are currently being met, this should be concerning. All along, those of you in favor of virtual and hybrid have been saying, "Follow the science and listen to the experts," and now, when the science and the experts are saying, "Send the kids back to school five days a week," you're looking for excuses. Please tell me that we can at least meet the minimum of what's expected. George Washington Carver, 99% of failures come from people who have a habit of making excuses. Asking for waivers at this time is the ultimate demonstration of zero accountability by you, our district leaders. It will lead to significant complacency...
Thank you, Kelly.
...and needs to be tabled. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has signed up?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the room, Room 109, the audience, that may have just come late that would like to address the board? Okay, thank you for checking, Sue. Okay, moving on to our two action items. The first action item is approval of the resolution to request waiver of education effectiveness, which is to be sent to the DPI. Jim, Dr. Seibert, would you please introduce this to us for us?
Sure. I'd be happy to, Mr. Komo. So, good evening, everybody. Ms. Thede and I will tag-team this. The request for both of these waivers, and we'll start with educator effectiveness, is due to the unpredictable nature of this particular school year that we find ourselves in, and through some feedback in talking with educators, as well as talking with principals, we made some decisions to refine our district goals that we've shared with you, where we're really focused on social-emotional well-being and our virtual learning platform so that we're able to flex between the multiple learning environments and be strong with that. And some of the things that we're finding is that educator effectiveness in and of itself is somewhat stressful to certain people, and we think if we could give people the flexibility in this particularly challenging year to either opt in or opt out, that would take another additional burden off of our educators and off of our principals. That would be helpful. It's because we're in and out, it's been very difficult for principals to schedule their evaluations, maintain those appointments. The fact that principals are subbing on a pretty consistent basis makes it difficult for them to actually be doing that. And what we also want to say is that if the board were to approve this, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't give teachers consistent feedback, or that we wouldn't give teachers consistent support. That already is happening. What we'd be doing is, within the educator effectiveness model that's mandated by the state, there is a heavy burden of essentially, we'll call it paperwork, but it's online resource adding, you know? So putting things in your documentation log, consistently trying to build that portfolio. And what we'd be saying is that if teachers wanted to say for this year, because of the challenges that we're facing and just keeping the schools open, "I'd like to push pause. I'll come back to that same cycle I'm on next year," that's what we'd be asking for permission to do. Those teachers that wanted to stay on, particularly those that are in their summary year three, would most likely stay on because they would be in their year to get their bump. So I think in a nutshell, that's what we're asking for. Sharon, would you, anything that I've missed, like to fill in?
No, I think you did a great summary. I think just indicating the burden of observations when schools are running in and out of closures. The principal and the teacher is one aspect. Part of the statute requires a certain number of observations and a certain number of minutes of observation, so without the waiver, if a principal had 19 staff members, for example, on a summary year, if because they've been subbing or because of closures now they can't meet that obligation, we're in violation, and we certainly don't want to set that up for any of our principals to not meet that requirement. But as Dr. Seibert said, they're still getting feedback. Basically, everyone's a first-year teacher this year, so they're getting feedback from their peers and from their principals, and constantly problem-solving, so it's not that they're not going to get feedback.
Okay, questions? Yes, Kurt.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things that we probably want to clear up. The challenge for educator effectiveness is we actually tie it to our compensation schedule. And we did that because we took a lot of time trying to figure out how to tie performance to pay for performance, and we elected to tie it to educator effectiveness, and that was kind of like... There was some uncertainty about doing that, but that's how we chose to do it, and that way we could implement a schedule, but yet still encourage people to perform and do certain things in order to get lane movement. And if you're not familiar with the schedule, there's steps and there's lanes, and when someone talks about them getting their seniority increase, as long as they have an additional step in their lane, they would get that seniority increase. But there's also the point that a lot of the teachers are out of steps. In other words, they maxed out their lane, and they can't get additional steps. That would be correct, right, Sharon?
That's correct.
So in their summer year, that's a chance for them to move a lane. So when they forego their summer year, they forego their opportunity to move the lane, which is a much bigger pay increase than they would be getting even if they had an additional step involved. So it's not like they won't be giving up something if they choose not to proceed with educator effectiveness. And it would be the choice of the teacher, not the principal. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
We wouldn't allow the principal to make this choice because the teacher has to elect.
Correct.
Because they're possibly giving up compensation.
And/or delaying it, in all cases delaying it another year.
Right.
Right.
So this isn't a freebie for anybody as far as the educators go. The principals, it might be a lower load for them because they wouldn't have to do quite as many this particular year, but it would be up to the teachers to decide whether they want to delay their compensation by another year. So a lot of the teachers have already prepared a lot of their work to proceed, so I don't see a lot of them opting out of the educator effectiveness plan, but I understand why the administration wants to give them the option of whether to continue in it or whether to delay it. And I think we're going to do a very good job of trying to explain to them what the consequences are. Should they opt out this year? Is that correct, Ms. Thede?
Yes, that is correct.
It's a complicated subject, and if it's not explained properly to people, it looks like we're doing a complete freebie, and we're not. And for the most part, if I was an educator and I was on the schedule and I'm trying to maximize my compensation, I probably wouldn't opt out, you know? But it's up to each individual teacher.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Dietz.
Ms. Thede, is this for teachers on the three-year cycle only?
Would you turn your mic on, Greg?
Is this for teachers on the three-year cycle only, or first- and second-year cycle teachers also?
It's going to be for all teachers, we decided.
Okay.
We'll have the choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Just, I have a question. So... Oh, I'm sorry. Cory, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I do, but go ahead. I can wait.
Oh, no. Go ahead. I'll hold up.
Thank you. I guess one technical question is, we've got two action items, one for educator effectiveness and one for instructional minutes, but I looked at the application for waiver. It actually has another one, the personal evaluation. Is that somehow tied into the educator effectiveness? Because it looks like a separate box, a completely separate waiver.
It's a separate box because, right, there are two statutes. One tells us how to do it, that's the EE, and the other one gives us a minimum of when we have to do it, which also is in the first one as well. But there's a separate statute that says that we have to evaluate every third year, so we would need to be exempt from that as well.
Right, so we're actually requesting three waivers. Don't regendize for two. I don't know who that's directed to, but...
Would it be three waivers, or is the two wrapped up into one?
The two is wrapped into one, but I would have to see how it's agendized, because they are... Cory's right, it's two boxes in that section there. The one box contains two statutes, and the other box contains one.
Okay. Well, what we're agendized for is the educator effectiveness, at least in this portion.
Right. Okay.
Kurt O'Brien.
We don't have the evaluation without the educator effectiveness in our system.
Right. Right. They're tied together for us.
They're one and the same. We have to apply two boxes, but apply for a waiver of one and not apply for a waiver of the other.
Right.
So they're one and the same, so I think it's agendized properly because of how we function. It's one waiver, educator effectiveness is what we call it, but it's really the evaluation waiver. So it's one common waiver for all boxes.
Diane?
I was saying, it actually says that, you know, on the form, it says, "Note this waiver does not..." Under personnel evaluation, that this waiver does not automatically waive 121.02 above, you know, type of thing. So it's really saying that they're kind of connected.
It's...
Yes, Cory?
Not to be overly technical, but it's not. If you look on the right, it says, "Check the box for the waivers you're requesting." It's two separate subsections in the statute. So I don't know if we can resolve that now, but I don't think it's properly agendized for the personnel evaluation, but...
Well, what we'll do is, we can move forward with the educator effectiveness aspect tonight, and technically, Jim, you can look into the technicalities of that, and if we have to reconvene another meeting at a future date to consider the third one, we can do that. And if you, you know, as you have discussions with DPI, you can kind of work through the technicality there if you want.
Be happy to.
I do have a question. So let's say we have a teacher that has opted out and is underperforming. What can we do about that?
At any time, a principal can place a teacher onto a summary year, and then we can go through an improvement plan if needed. So we would still address underperforming teachers, even if they opted out.
Okay, so we still have the expectations that you're going to have to go and teach even though you opted out, and you got to teach well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, Karen.
How would we know they're underperforming?
Did you hear that, Sharon?
I did. Principals will still be... They're still giving feedback, so as they can and as they're out, if they're not substituting, they're still in classrooms giving feedback to teachers. As Jim, Dr. Seibert had mentioned, it's about logging in the number and the hours of observations and putting it into the platform that we utilize, and then other ways we would normally find out if a teacher is underperforming, if a student brings up concerns, or if a parent brings up concerns.
Mr. Brian?
Ms. Thede, we're still doing... We're still going to be doing the... If we have a nonperforming teacher, we're still going to be putting them on an improvement plan. This doesn't stop that, the ongoing improvement.
That is correct.
So this is not something that really impacts where we just let a bad teacher continue. They can be put on an improvement plan, and I assume we have some improvement plans maybe ongoing now? Do.
Yes, that is correct.
This isn't going to stop that. They're still going to be on that improvement plan, which takes a lot of work from both sides, but you're trying to turn a teacher around and hopefully be able to recover that teacher.
I appreciate the details of what that really involves, Kurt. I appreciate that. Ms. Reinacek.
How many other districts are doing this?
I don't know if I... Jim, do you have a feel for that?
I don't, no. I mean, last year, as an example, almost every district that I'm aware of applied for the instructional minutes, which is the second one we're going to talk about today. I envision that being relatively popular. In terms of educator effectiveness, I don't know how many other districts might be investigating that.
Sharon, do you know?
I do not know.
Joe or Jody? I might as well go around the horn here.
I'm not aware of a number.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or motions at this time? Mr. Baumgart?
Yes. Hearing what we've heard and talked about, I approve of this myself. I am going to now move to approve the resolution to request a waiver for educator effectiveness and personnel evaluation.
Yeah, it's in the motion, but it's not in... It's not agendized.
Okay. I'll skip that part, then. I'll take... All right. Let me start over again, please. I move to approve the resolution to request a waiver for educator effectiveness as outlined in Wisconsin Department of Public Construction COVID-19 School District Flexibility Application for 2020 and 2021 School Year.
Is there a second to that? Same by Diane? Discussion? More questions? Yes, Kurt.
I think this is a frustrating vote because I think people misunderstand what this is going to do, you know, some people do, and you almost feel like if you take a vote for the educator effectiveness waiver, which I think is something that is reasonable to ask for a waiver, but my main concerns are how many educators are actually going to take the waiver? And it seems like if we don't have very many educators willing to take the waiver, it seems to be causing some frustration because of how people understand the waiver, and we haven't been able to get past that, I don't know. Give it for other board members to comment, but I'm concerned about that aspect.
Mr. Baumgart?
In the conversation that I heard, the fact, the way we are operating today, that the principals are in a difficult situation, do an entire waiver, excuse me, not the waiver, the entire effectiveness program, and conduct classes as subs, and keep the building clean, and decide whether or not they have to go virtual, are so many things that the principal has stuck with, required to do under the effectiveness program, that it seems a little bit of flexibility here, is what I'm hearing, that the principals would be able to continue to supervise, but in a less, maybe a less technical way, to identify whether teachers are moving or not moving properly. So yes, I can see that this resolution is going to be confusing to a number of people, but bottom line is, I think our administration is going to be in a better situation to manage the situation we're forced to be in without this than they are with it, which is, I guess, behind my decision to move for approving of this resolution.
Are there questions or comments? Yes, Amanda.
Yeah, I'm not sure who to direct this to. I'm going to go to you, Dr. Seibert. This is a request for the waiver, so does that mean DPI could deny it if they chose?
Yes, they could.
And then a second question, I guess following up to what the speaker asked, why now? Why are we asking for these at this point in the year?
I'll let Mrs. Thede kind of describe the timeline, and I think that will help answer your question.
Thank you.
Sharon?
We did originally look into this in August to see if we would need a waiver or not, and at that point DPI was giving us some flexibility in how we could do the observations, but when we looked into the flexibility, it didn't take away the minutes requirement, it didn't take away the number requirement, so in effect, we still had to do an entire cycle, which is something I worry that can be completed. Additionally, I believe Dr. Cook received some feedback from principals and possibly some teachers about the pressures that were being put on, because teachers, like I said, they're all first-year teachers right now, and they're trying new things, and then they're going to be compared to a rubric that... And they're striving for threes and fours, but they might not be at their best, and they might be getting a two in that area, which would be basic, which could then obviously impact their salary. And right now, we're all learning, and we want to give feedback, and so that was high pressure as well. So then we revisited the idea of a waiver, and as Dr. Seibert mentioned, we changed the goal and focus for principals to be focusing on, and some of the teachers were already working on their plans and goals, and then they would have to change, and they're worried about data collection. Additionally, you might have different groups of students now than at the end of the year. So it just was revisited as something that we should explore.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Ms. Reinacek.
I very much understand the flexibility that we're trying to give. I understand what the principals are saying and what Sharon is saying about the number of minutes and about the minutes and the number requirement. I still feel that our teachers need to be observed, and they are, I get that, but I feel like our kids, being the ones who have... Kind of their education has been kind of very much dampened, and this whole year for them is going to be, plus half of last year, is going to be maybe swept under the rug, is what I'm kind of thinking. If the state, if we can do it, if they can do it, I feel like if we don't have a good grasp of how we're doing and how we could get better, and how we can be there for our teachers and the people that are on the front lines, then how are we ever going to evaluate our kids' progress? So I just don't feel comfortable giving a waiver. I get that the principals can't be in there, but can a vice principal be in there? And I understand how the beginning of this year was, where all hands were on deck, and they still are, but I don't see how we could just get through it now and be able to do what we're supposed to do. I just don't feel taking eyes off of what we're doing in the classroom is any benefit to the kids.
Anyone else? Yes, Cory?
Thank you. I think this year of all years, I think without comparison, we need every available tool to assess what we decided as a board would be our instructional model, whether it's working or not. I think even from these first-year teachers, not even, I think especially from the first-year teachers, we need to hear from them and every other teacher saying, "Look, you're the ones, as Ms. Reinacek said, are on the front lines, you're the one, you know, teaching the kids. We need to know what's working, what's not." Whether we as a board and administration decides to hold those teachers to those scores, the threes or fours, I think it's a different conversation. I think we need every available tool out there to assess what we did, and frankly, I think the public has a right to know that as well. They have to hold the board accountable for this. Ultimately, and I think singularly, the board is responsible for the instruction model we picked. We need to know if it's working or not. If it's not working, we need to find a solution. So that's all I had to say.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. McCaffrey.
I would agree definitely with the comments. We need to know whether or not the current system that we have in place is working. However, for me, I don't think the EE is the most effective tool to gauge the effectiveness of the current model that we're in. That... And I'm not a big fan of the EE. I have some experience with it. I have a lot of family members that have experience with it, and it's not the most beloved tool out there, but it was designed to evaluate teachers for a specific model. And the way that our school year is going right now at all grade levels, we're not in that model. So for me, the waiver that we're asking for is a waiver of a tool that is not very useful to us in our current situation, so... And I'm not overly impressed... in our current situation. So, and I'm not overly impressed about how good of a tool it is, period. But, so I don't really have a problem with the waiver for that, for that point, is because that tool is not meant to evaluate what we're in right now. I'd also like to say that I know a lot of principals, and I think that the principals know what's happening in their schools. If they're not, they're in the wrong position. And we had bad hires. But I don't think we have. I think that our principals know what's happening in the schools, they know what their teachers are doing, and they're still evaluating them, even if they're not using the EE. So I really don't have a problem voting for the waiver.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I appreciate everybody's comments, and quite helpful tonight. And Mr. McCaffrey's pretty accurate. And I think the danger of trying to push something that doesn't really work in this environment is that it doesn't get done right. And when we tie it to compensation, it should be done right. So, even though the community may not understand it because we haven't been able to explain it properly, and it's a complicated subject when it comes to compensation and all that stuff, I'm certainly willing to answer any questions people have after this vote. But I think the proper thing to do would be to move forward with this application for a waiver.
Yes, Diane?
My question would be, if we do, we're just voting on the educator effectiveness, can we still have an expectation that evaluations will continue but not using the educator effectiveness model? You know?
Could you answer that, Jim or Sharon? So since we don't have that second part that Cory pointed out, the personal evaluation, that still remains in place if this vote passes to waive the EE part. So, what?
How does the separation work?
Yeah, what's the impact there, and how does that work?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I think, I think Diane, you said, could we still deevaluate, just not use EE? Then we'd have to come up with a way we're evaluating, and as it ties in with compensation, our compensation is tied to scores with EE, even if you're not, or when you're in summary year, even if you're not going for fours for that column movement. So, it would be, I don't know how we would separate that. They are still getting feedback. And so evaluation, I think, means more of the paperwork and official section of it versus the feedback that they're getting constant feedback from their principals or peers on performance. And I don't know if that quite got at what you were asking, Diane?
So would you, let me just, excuse me just a moment. So would you say, Sharon, it would be fair to say that essentially what we're suspending is the paperwork involved? We're still, principals are continuously still doing the things that they're doing. We just might not get the exact minutes, the number of sessions observed, and the paperwork we don't need to submit then to DPI. Is that fair?
Exactly. Yes, that's fair.
But those who would like to still opt in could, you know, which is, which was the foundation of this whole process, that if they're, if it's their evaluation year that's going to make a pay difference, that that's still a possibility. So maybe the separation is a good thing, that evaluations will continue, you know, but not requiring the minutes, not requiring the paperwork, et cetera, unless you opt into it.
So maybe a different way to ask the question is, is if this motion to waive EE goes forward, do we even need to come back for the second part? Because they're separate, right? And what would that mean to us?
I think similar to your suggestion before, Mr. Como, that Dr. Seibert talked with DPI. I do think that if we are moving forward as proposed, allowing teachers to opt in or opt out, then we need the waiver from that other statute, because the other statute says they need an evaluation every third year. So if they're in their third year and they want to opt out, for example, I wouldn't be able to allow that, because we didn't get a waiver from the other statute, if that makes sense.
Yeah, got you now. Thank you. Okay. Are we ready to take the vote on waiving a resolution to waive the EE, the educator effectiveness submitted to DPI? Sue, why don't you take the roll call vote?
Cory Montiel?
No.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reincheck?
No.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Greg Deeds?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes seven-two, Sue. Moving on to, and so we'll have some follow-up. Dr. Seibert, you'll do that, and we'll figure out what we need to do next.
Mrs. Thiede, I will, yes.
So, absolutely. We don't want to, it's a technical glitch. We were prepared to talk about both, but we didn't properly post it. So, we need to do that right.
I apologize for that.
Moving on to the approval of a resolution to request a waiver of instructional minutes to DPI. Dr. Seibert?
Sure, this one's a little more straightforward. So this would be the one that you approved last May in a public hearing and then submitted to DPI. Most districts did. There is a state statute 12102F that gives specific hour requirements for various grade levels. You might remember, we used to have days of instruction too. That got waived, taken out of the statute roughly four to five years ago. And now it's just hours of instruction. So at least 437 in kindergarten, at least 1,050 in grades one through six, at least 1,137 in grades seven through 12. And the rationale behind asking for this waiver is, as you saw today, as you've been seeing relatively consistently here lately, we have a lot of classrooms in and out, particularly at the elementary level. Prior to Thanksgiving, we had six of our schools closed at one particular time for a week to two weeks. So for us to be able to adequately calculate those minutes and feel strong that we are actually meeting those minutes would be a challenge for us. So, it doesn't certainly mean that we're not going to do the best job that we can in every single model that we're in, and that we aren't going to continue to livestream, and that we aren't going to continue to do the best we can with elementary kids when we're in the virtual model as well. It just would give us the flexibility to continue to move in and out of those models seamlessly and allow us to focus on being strong at those models.
Questions or comments on this, or, and/or motion? Cory? Mr. Montiel? Oh, we can't hear you. Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry, did it backwards there.
I'm trying to get reading lips, but I don't think the audience can see you.
You can see me or no?
No.
Okay. For each level, Dr. Seibert, the 437, the 1,050, the 1,037, how many hours is the administration seeking a waiver for, for each level?
By requesting the waiver, we wouldn't, we're not asking for a specific number. We're just saying that we would be asking the DPI to not have to meet those numbers. I couldn't tell you exactly by the end of the year where we're going to be, because I don't know the models that we're going to be in.
Okay. This is completely new to me. So I went to the DPI statute, it's administrative code, and it says you have to list the number of hours requested to be waived. So I don't know what that is, the numbers. It's sub four of 8.01 sub four. So again, that can be overly technical, but I have to know exactly what we're voting on.
That, that has not been the understanding that we've had, nor was that the way that it worked last year, when, when we approved those. So, certainly that's something I can talk with the DPI about as well. Last year, it was as simple as a Google form that we filled out as districts. This year, it's this particular form, but if that, I don't know how any district would be able to exactly know that.
Okay. Darren, now.
Mrs. Reincheck?
So, whether those, Dr. Seibert, so whether, okay, so first of all, just like the last question, I, motion, I absolutely understand your side. But whether those classes that have to go virtual due to all the, of the reasons that they would have to go virtual, aren't those kids still learning virtually? So whether they're at home learning or whether they're at school learning, isn't that being counted as instructional minutes?
Well, it's, it's being counted, Mrs. Reincheck. The difference is, when you do these calculations, so you take what a length of a day is times the number of days that you go to school in a year, 180, and then you subtract, like at the secondary, five minutes of passing time, you subtract one lunch period, and then you come up with this large calculation to show that you met this overall number of hours. That's very easy to do when we're in school for 180 days. When we go back and forth, kids are certainly learning, but we don't know that they're doing the exact same, you know, 8:40 to 2:40, for example, at home that they're doing when we have them in school. We know what the calendar is. So, it just gives us the flexibility to say it's different, and we're in and out, and we can't consistently calculate this as easily as we can when we're full face-to-face, if that helps.
Well, if they are at home learning and they have certain classes, let's say from eight to three, or whatever it is, we can't count those minutes? Or we can, you're just not sure how long of lunch they have, and that kind of thing.
I would say that, yes. And in elementary too, for example, when we're virtual in elementary, we can't livestream the same way in elementary that we can at secondary. You know, when you take first-period math at the high school, you know, you can log on for 45 minutes. In elementary, we can't necessarily livestream an entire day with first graders. You know, we can go in and out and, and take a break, and now come back, and we'll do some more, and then take a break and come back. It's, it looks different.
So, just like last spring, are all the districts around us also doing this, since they have virtual and have to be quarantined just like us?
Yeah, I would say this one would be much more popular, yes.
Mr. Ryan?
So, the issue that's a lot of out of our control as a district is the quarantine situation. And because of the quarantine situation, it makes it difficult for us as we're moving back and forth. Let's say, in the case of elementary, for example, we're trying to do 100% full face-to-face with elementary. But I think this week alone, we've had five, six, seven classes that have got, have had to go to virtual because of close contacts. So, when people say, "We're doing this because we made choices," well, that's not really true. We are following the guidelines set up to us by the CDC and county when it comes to quarantines. In the case of the elementary kids, our choice has been 100% full face-to-face, five days a week. So, we would need this waiver, if I'm correct, we would need this waiver for our elementary kids as well as our secondary-level kids. Is that correct, Dr. Seibert?
That is correct, yes.
So it wouldn't matter whether we were face-to-face, five days a week, for all our grade levels, we'd still want to request this, this waiver, correct?
We would, yeah. Like, for example, today, when I sent you several emails of classes that went home, their day got disrupted, their parents picked them up at different times. They probably didn't get much done the rest of today. Now tomorrow, they'll log on at nine o'clock, which is not exactly the same time that they would start. So every, it's a little different when they have to transition, and it takes time to get up and moving. So it would be, definitely be applicable at every level.
Comments, questions, Mr. McCaffrey? Motions?
Does this waiver cover our special ed students as well? Because I know that we are required with the funding to provide them with this minutes as well. So, does this cover?
I don't, their IEP needs would still need to be met.
Okay.
And I could refer to Dr. Cook on that. Otherwise, we need to provide what's called compensatory, as you're familiar with, services. So, yeah, their IEP needs still need to be met. This is more of the overall district hours.
The regular students, yeah.
Dr. Cook, you want to comment on that? Further comment?
Please repeat the question. It was hard for me to hear virtually.
I was just wondering, Joe, is, if the waiver would cover the special ed students as they transition back and forth? Because I know that we have the IEPs and certain requirements surrounding services provided to those students as well. And I was just wondering if this waiver covered those as well.
The waiver is the acknowledgement that we are not making the number of instructional minutes that we've otherwise scheduled ourselves. And so, what we're saying as families, we acknowledge we haven't met that number of minutes, and we still then have that obligation. So we don't get a pass on the number of minutes in the IEP. But we are coming forward and saying, due to the environment that we're in, we're not able to meet those. We will engage you in the service discussion down the road. This is the same rationale that we used last year, was heavily dependent on our inability to deliver all of the special ed services that were listed in kids' IEPs back in May.
Thanks, Joe.
Questions, comments, or motions? Mr. Ryan?
I move to approve the resolution, request a waiver for instructional minutes as outlined in the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction COVID-19 School District Flexibility Application for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Is there a second to that? Same by Diane?
A second.
Further discussion?
Back here, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cory?
Sorry, anyone interrupt?
I'm not used to looking over my shoulder. Sorry.
I mean this with all due respect. This is lowering standards. Whether I'm on this board for another year and a half or 20 years, I will never, ever agree to lower the standard for how we deliver education to our students in this district, or how we assess it. The state law is those mandatory minimum hours. That has been in effect for I don't know how many decades. It's our duty morally and legally to deliver those. And I think if this waiver is granted, we're not going to meet that. And we're going to fail, and we're going to reduce those standards. If you look at it, I don't know how else we can justify doing this. I mean, the argument for hybrid, and the argument for everything on free did, which is fine, it was the board's decision to go to hybrid, and to give the administration the ability to shut down schools, which all makes sense. Either that's working or it's not. If it's not working, we need to figure out why. Without looking at this and without holding the district to the standard, we're not going to know how many minutes we actually delivered to kids who are attending virtually. We're not going to be able to know when we did switch a classroom or a grade to virtual. What was this, what was, how did that education happen? How many minutes were actually delivered? It just doesn't make any sense to me. A lot of the stuff we deal with is, you know, gray. For me, this is black and white. It's lowering standards. It leads to a domino effect. It just, I just can't support it.
Mr. Baumgart?
I understand that Cory's concern is there, but it looks to me, the way this is worded, that DPI has already said that this is a possibility we might have to endure during this environment, because the Department of Public Construction COVID flexibility application, blah, blah, blah. DPI has said that these things are real, and we need to deal with them in an appropriate manner. We're not in the same world we were in when all of this stuff start, before all this stuff started. So, I understand what he's saying, but I do believe the environment we're in, things have to be reconsidered. And I don't think it's a matter of reconsidering what we're after in terms of the education of our children. I think it's means, we've got things going on here that we, we have difficulty working with. Is this as important as keeping a principal working in a substitute capacity, or some of the other things that happened because of the very difficult environment we've been forced to work in? So, I, my thoughts.
Questions or comments? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote on the resolution to request a waiver of instructional minutes to DPI.
Greg Deeds?
Karen Reincheck? Cory Montiel?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Diane Voight?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes seven-two, Sue. Okay, everyone, this concludes our public hearing. But we do have a regular meeting to roll into. So, why don't we take five minutes? Five minutes. We'll start in five minutes.